I call this meeting to order. Good evening, council and honored guests. Roll call, please.
Gandy.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
Flornoy.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Any changes, council, to the agenda this evening, our guests? If not, I'll read the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the June 22nd, 2020 council meeting. Approval of the June 26th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $146,119.28. Approval of July 3rd, 2020 special payroll in the amount of $9,731.20. Approval of July 10th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $131,101.94. Acceptance of the Economic Development Committee minutes of July 6th, 2020. Resolution approving fund transfers. Resolution of employment in the police department. Approval of liquor license for the bookhouse Fairfield and Shokai. Approval of total claims in the amount of $1,801,642.41, of which the claims greater than $75,000 include Drish Construction in the amount of $278,909.32. L.L. Pelling Company in the amount of $94,362.45. Maxwell Construction in the amount of $678,208.17. And Peoples Company in the amount of $211,500 even. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, seconded by Flornoy. Rebecca, would you call a roll, please?
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
We have an appearance in our public forum of Mr. Ed Noyes/Emerald Holdings LLC. Mr. Noyes has comments to make about the city's intended purchase of the DOT buildings. Mr. Noyes, good evening.
Hey, thanks, Paul. Appreciate it very much. So, I realize I'm coming as a beggar. I'm really, it upsets me to see the quality of those buildings that the people of Iowa paid for, the tax dollars. And I've been through it three different times and I'm seeing the potential for those buildings. And I consider it a tragedy, so I want to go a public record on that. I'm not certain that the, I understand the value of the police, of the fire department completely. I understand that, how important that is, that is a must. My first question is, what was the intention of the fire department before the DOT buildings were abandoned? What was the intention? Where were they going to go? What were their options? Because what I'm hearing is, this is the only option. That's what I'm hearing. It's the only option that makes any sense for a lot of different reasons. One of them is that the fire department needs to be downtown. Well, 9/11 was an emergency function, as well as the Law Center, and they moved out to West Grimes. The emergency room was an emergency function, and they're on south, they're on the south edge of town. So, I don't really buy that argument. I also don't buy the argument that the supply lines or the buried lines cannot be moved. I don't buy that argument. So, my concern is, we're in an economic tragedy going on in this country right now, and it's not going to, Fairfield's not going to escape, okay? One-third of all Americans didn't pay their mortgages last month. It's going to get worse before it gets better. What that means is, people are going to have the inability to pay their property taxes as we go down the road. So, what this, what this is doing, and I'd be interested in seeing what the actual budget is for this project, but I'm estimating it to be at least a million dollars. And I don't know where we have that money or how we intend to pay that money, but I'm almost, I can guarantee you that it'll be the property taxes, people, the people that pay property taxes that will pay that money. So, I'm concerned about that. Has the city actually looked at other land options that are available to do this project with? I have. I've looked at many. It's amazing to me, you know, we've been talking about the North Fourth Street and how much of the tragedy it is and that development, that area can never be developed. You've got buildings there that aren't even worth $5,000, that are just an absolute junk pile sitting there. So, instead of the city going to that person, and those landowners, and saying, "Listen, we need to build a new fire department. We'll give you $5,000 to get rid of this atrocity," you're tearing down a million dollars worth of value of real estate. That doesn't make sense to me. I don't think it's an intelligent move. So, my concern is, has the city really looked at the options that they have available? There's empty cornfields out there by the Law Center, okay? The Lincoln Center was taken, oh, the old Lincoln School was taken over. I don't know what's going on with there. I never see anybody in those buildings, number one. So, I question whether that was a wise move to take over those buildings by the city. But I also wonder why you have big, huge lawns back there in the back of that, okay? There's nothing being done with. It's empty. It would be free to the city. Get built whatever they want. The other thing that I looked at is, I look at the size of the property that you're looking at taking over. The current frontage on the fire department is right around 30 feet, no more than 35 feet, going off of Second Street. If you don't tear down the West Building, which I'm advising you not to do, for the reasons that we've already stated, you've got over 100 feet that you could build three times the size of your current fire department, just in the middle section alone. You would not need to tear down where the beautifully positioned daycare center is, which is in the basement of the East Building. It's ready to go right now. We have a desperate need for daycare. We're getting ready to spend a million dollars to build a new daycare center. You've got one that's free right now, ready to go, in that East Building. So, I don't see these kind of things being talked about. They certainly could be talked about. And I'm also concerned about, I understand the rationale, I reviewed the code section as to why the city has the ability to talk about bidding on a public auction so that other people don't know about it, and that's what happened in this case. The concern is that the bidding might actually go up, and the city might have to pay more for that property. I don't believe that's the case. I believe the exact opposite is true. There were 17 individual bidders that actually bid on this property, every one of which, other than the city, had an idea on how that property could be developed. 17 different property, different people. My company bid the highest bid. I know exactly where the bidding was. I knew exactly what it was worth, and I tapped out where I tapped out. The city kept going, obviously won the bid. The fact that the city won the bid does not mean, in my opinion, that there's been any kind of adequate public disclosure or discussion of the propriety of doing it the way that the city is proposing. So, I, I don't know, I mean, does the fire department not function today? Do we not have a functioning fire department? That's one of my questions. So, how much of an emergency is it that we have, must do this right now? Have you factored in the lost property taxes that the city will not get if you don't allow the properties to be developed and paid taxes on? So, these are the questions. There's great uses of these buildings. It's a tragedy. I really would prefer that it not happen. I would ask the city to consider opening it up, having at least a limited timeframe where other ideas can be propagated. Perhaps there could be an engineering study to see if the supply lines or whatever's under the buried cables or whatever's under there could be moved, because I've been told that they can be moved. So, these are my considerations. And I'm open to any form of discussion, further input, give you my information, what I've come up with, all those kinds of things.
Is there any discussion or comment?
Well, we don't own Lincoln School, I can tell them that. Of course, I know.
You don't own Lincoln School?
No. The school system leases it to Indian Hills.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see anything happening with it.
Well, it used to be a career.
Career Academy.
I just don't see anything happening with it. I think it's another tragedy. I don't see anything happening.
Yeah, but that's the school districts. They could sell it to us, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, you got an empty, I used to play in that yard. I know how big it is. Big.
What are these cables you're talking about? We didn't hear about those.
What's that?
What are the cables that you're talking about? We didn't hear about those.
No, one of the reasons I was told that you can't use the land that you already have in back of the existing fire department is that there's buried lines underneath there, and therefore, it would be too costly, if not quote, impossible to move those lines. I've been told this twice now by representatives of the city, as the reason why you can't just build on your existing property. Including the mayor, just so you know. I'm not making this up.
No, I believe you.
There's fiber optics underneath there, and I did tell you that when we were in discussion before.
I remember you told us some, why they couldn't.
Any further comment or discussion?
I just want to say, I actually agree with some of your points. Before we bought the property, I would have liked to see an engineering study answering some of those questions. Still like to see us explore all our options on this. I guess the clock was ticking on the.
I understand.
On that. Now, go into closed session, that's good business. You know, we don't want to tip people off to our bids, so that was the right thing to do. But we weren't given much information beforehand, and the public wasn't either, so you have a point. It wasn't talked about. So, now, we're kind of putting the cart back in front of the horse, or switching that up, trying to get back on, on track with actual scope of work and a study, and I think looking at all our possible locations makes sense, because that's what the Law Center did. They had a South Main location, they were also working, looking at, I don't remember what made the determination for them to end up on Grimes, but I know some people regret it. They have factory dust that gunks up their air conditioning. So, yeah, we need to do our due diligence. So, we own it, but I don't think you're going to see anything happen to it anytime soon.
Right. And I actually believe, because I understand the logic of why it was done in private, but I actually believe that if there would have been a public discussion about that the city was looking at this, you would have had less bidders, because they wouldn't even, they wouldn't have, they would have known all the city wanted. So, I think the logic actually was in reverse. I think it should have been, it would have been better to have a public discussion before the city committed. It's a lot of money, $235,000.
Wasn't there a public discussion? Didn't we have it, did we have it as a matter of something we spoke at a city council meeting?
Well, we voted to accept the recommendation that was made in closed session, so we didn't discuss it in public.
But was there a discussion in committee? I believe there was.
I believe so, yeah, maybe.
I believe there's a public, there'd be, there's an agenda item on a committee meeting in which we discussed this.
Right.
Very possibility. So, it wasn't.
It doesn't sound like it was much of a discussion, that people can't even remember the discussion.
Well, if you look at the minute, if you look at the meeting agenda, well, I believe it's for.
Was it public safety?
Public safety.
It was the same one where we discussed the truck, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Scott?
So, these are public, these are notices that are posted, just like city council meetings. Citizens are interested, can.
The truck or the buyer?
Well, the truck, but not the purchase of the property.
These are, these are notices that are published, just like notices for city councils, so citizens are interested.
So, the destruction of the DOT building was publicly discussed?
What I'm saying is, the issue of what, I think if you want to look at the agenda, I'm not, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think I, if I were you, I'd take a look at the agenda, see what it does say. And also see the minutes.
I can certain you it was not discussed.
I think we only discussed the purchase of the fire engine, the truck, and the trade end of the older version, selling it to Batavia.
And we briefly touched on the building, because we talked about how the truck wasn't going to fit in our current building.
Yeah, it's two foot longer, or something like that.
Yeah, it's almost, yeah.
Right. But I'm not opposed to having a more vigorous discussion about options. We have the bill, property now, we can, other people coming to me offered suggestions as well, so I'm not against listening to those ideas and figuring out what the best plan for the city as a whole is. We're not in a real big hurry to break ground, are we?
No.
We have a few weeks to talk about it.
Any further discussion or comment?
Weeks.
Weeks.
Yes. Our city attorney, Mr. Morrissey.
Here, sit in that chair, John. That mic is open, too.
I just want to comment on the idea that the city's going to do something quickly here. In the late 80s, we were part of what became the Law Center. And Mr. Noyes was around then, too. And my recall is that it took us about 10 years to actually flesh out what we were talking about in the late 80s, when we knew we were going to have to do something about a Law Center. And we had a task force in the mid 90s, and by that time, we had resolved, at least board supervisors, I remember, voted down where South Gate ended up as a potential site. And the interchange down where 34 and 1 intersect, there were discussions about, maybe that'd be a good place. The hospital wasn't there yet. But when you think back on that, and what prompted going out west, there wasn't a real set plan for what was out west for probably the first five years, that everybody knew we were going to have to do something about the Law Center. So, I would expect that the city's not going to race in as far as the way this gets resolved and what happens to that land over there. But the urgency was, it only became available this one time, and it won't become available again. And that's the discussion the council had to have as far, should we do something now or should we let it pass, similar to what happened with the Law Center locations back in the early 90s. And at this point, anybody's guess as far as where we go next, as far as the plan and what it's going to look like, that's my comment.
Anything further?
I really appreciate you, Tom, I really do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Noyes. We'll now go on to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The action item first up is for the, to set a public hearing for the stop box slash curb stop repair schedule of assessments. And I believe a public hearing has been set for August 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by, most approved by Anderson, seconded by Pam. Rebecca, would you call a roll, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Apologize, I should have asked for discussion, but I believe it carried unanimously. Next action item is consideration of concept of placing tables in Central Park, and we have an illustration that's attached to the minutes. Mr. Hallie, I believe you want to speak to this?
Sure. So, I was asked to bring something similar to what we discussed in 2017 back for consideration, mainly because COVID-19 has forced many people to be eating takeout. They can't sit in the restaurants downtown, so our downtown is now full of people eating lunch and dinner. And a little history, 2017, a similar proposal to this was presented. It failed 4-3. 2018, the Park and Rec Advisory Board went ahead and authorized their director to put a couple of their standard wooden tables under some pine trees that have recently been trimmed up, so now there was space underneath them. So, now, there, there were two tables chained to those trees, just the standard red painted picnic tables that are in all the other parks. And then, a few weeks ago, two more were added, so now there are four total underneath the pine trees. And the thinking is, can we do something that fits the, the style and grace of Central Park a little better? I don't want to knock those, those tables, they work, they function, but they just look a little out of, out of place chained to those trees, is what I've been hearing. So, this is a similar design to what was proposed before. The tables are manufactured by a company called Dumore, same manufacturer as the metal benches that are all throughout downtown, which you have is an exact match of that metal finish. They sit four each. It would be eight total, east-west sides of the gazebo, in what is now a space that has mulch and bushes and some weeds. Two of the tables would have the bench closest to the inside sidewalk would not be there, and that is for wheelchair access. So, something that the, the tables under the mulch don't currently provide, which is easy access for wheelchairs. So, two of these eight tables would have wheelchair access. They would be permanently affixed. And the change is, compared to before, we were talking, we're trying to get it done quickly, because there were no chairs, or so there were no tables on Central Park. Now, the goal is a little bit different. It's to provide a better aesthetic. These brick pavers, if you go down, scroll down one more, the brick pavers are the same brick pavers as are on the crosswalks downtown, so you've got, again, another element, not introducing a new element, you're just bringing that element into the park a little bit more. And secondarily, the tables are spaced a little further apart, so you're going to get about eight and a half feet from the inside bench, the inside bench of the tables, which maintains the social distancing. Because we don't know how long that we're going to be needing to maintain social distancing. We don't know how long COVID-19's going to be around. There are going to be people who, when invited back inside to the restaurants, won't go in at first, because they're concerned about their health. I think that we can all agree downtown dining or dining on Central Park isn't going to Park and Rec Advisory Board, I talked to them a week ago, they approved it unanimously, contingent only on ensuring that it would not become a weed problem. So, basically, if we did the brick option, finding some sort of mortar that doesn't allow weeds to grow, it's called polymeric sand, basically forms almost like a concrete. So, also, we've got a letter of support from the new executive director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Terry Baker, which is at the end of this. She talks about, you want an inviting downtown, because where locals congregate, visitors also will go. So, you want a downtown that has things happening, and that's what brings, so the, the letters, the last, there you go. So, I recommend you read that, because it's very well-written. Finally, the budget. So, the majority of this, if you scroll back up to one page ahead of that, Jason, so primarily, this would be fundraised. So, we're not asking for the city to contribute, though if the city contributes some in-kind, we can save about $12,000. I will say that those numbers, under the contribution of the city, that's the retail value of hiring a private contractor. That is not what it costs our city crews. Our city crews can do it for a lot less than that. But that's the value that we're able to provide by just simply prepping the site, putting up some barricades, basic stuff that city crews can handle. And then, maybe a little engineering work with Melanie, just the, for the concrete base that the bricks sit on. Now, the alternative is, if fundraising is difficult, because obviously, we're in a bit of a economic slump, you don't have to do the pavers, you could just put on, put a standard concrete sidewalk, and it would look fine. It wouldn't look quite as nice, but it would look fine. So, tonight, we're just looking for approval of the project, approval of a little bit of in-kind labor from our city crews, and then, we'll put it out for some fundraising and see what we get. But I, I think I can also get that total price down, some of these numbers, maybe a little high, but we're looking at about $20,000 for tables, $5,000 for brick, and then the labor to install concrete base, et cetera. So, the amount that would be fundraised for, this is saying 56.7, I think, maybe just under 50, maybe more realistic. Any questions?
I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, but I definitely will be a negative person on this project. Because, first of all, I think when we tried this once before, Michael tried it, and the community, as well as the council, turned it down at that time. Because I think people feel very strongly about Central Park. I mean, it's a real, you know, it's a real asset to this community. And I think doing something like this is going to completely change Central Park. And I think people enjoy it for the various seasons, and I think the thing that we all real, have to realize is, unfortunately, we are in Iowa, and outdoor dining is very definitely limited. I mean, it's great when it's, you know, perfect weather and things, but it is not something that's going to go on for a long time. Because unfortunately, bringing more food is going to bring more flies, more gnats, more anything you want to call varmints to the downtown area. I mean, flies will be unbelievable. And so, I, I mean, for this reason, as I say, I think it's very, very objectionable. And I really think, as I say, changing the format of Central Park will be unfortunate, because the community is really proud of this park. It's really definitely a tradition that has been here, and as people do drive through, coming, whether they're coming across on 34, coming up on Highway 1, the park is, has always been a really, really strong feature of this community. And I think trying to, I mean, the sad part is, there, if you want to go picnic, you can picnic in Chautauqua Park, you can go to Howard Park, and the restaurants have tried very hard to do some outdoor dining in front of their facilities. And I think this is kind of, again, the problem is also going to be the basic, I'm sorry, like the trash that is going to be accumulated, because you're not going to, believe it or not, that people are not all going to pick up after themselves. And, I mean, unfortunately, that's something else, I guess, that, you know, the park department will be responsible for. And, I mean, about the time that, that's just one more added responsibility that I think isn't needed. So, I mean, in this respect, I just, I, I really think the community would be very, very disheartened to see the park turning into a quote-unquote "eating" area, rather than the beauty that is in the park.
Are you finished?
Sorry that I felt that way.
That's fine.
I really.
Didn't you have a private donor the first time this came around?
No, there was some sort of rumor going around that there was a single donor. There were zero donors. Still zero donors. This is not just the concept.
I just thought we'd heard that at a council meeting.
No, someone, one of the people speaking against it said something, and I have no idea where that came from.
Okay. I guess my gut reaction is, we already have a certain kind of architecture downtown with the seating around the gazebo, so I would like to see something along those lines that matches that kind of.
The concrete benches?
Marble or concrete, I don't know. Anyway, then along Martha's suggestion about cleanliness and problems, one of the advantages of having restaurant owners maintain properties in front of their establishments is that they keep them clean, and so you don't have the accumulation of materials around City Park. And the first time this came around, there was a question raised or an objection raised that it might compete with people that already established outside dining around there, and have gone to great expense to do so outside of their restaurants. So, the city's kind of competing with restaurants that don't have that option, or can't afford to do it, or have chosen not to do it, for whatever reason. So, that's just my personal look at it. I did get one email from somebody who had some concerns, and this person just suggested that we do take more action to encourage outside dining by established restaurants already, to encourage that. Along Martha's point, Central Park is a historic landmark and should be honored for its beauty and integrity. And I agree with this, too. If you look at the, an aerial view of downtown, what really struck me as being remarkable is how little green space we have. So, this would remove some green space from our downtown, where we need more green space, not less. And they're bolted down permanent structure, so there's less flexibility in moving them or having activities possibly. And then, this person thought they'd be too hot to sit on in the summertime, if they're made of metal, so they may not be very usable in that respect.
There's an umbrella hole option we could get.
And, let's see. And again, along with Martha's point, this person thought it would just attract more trash and unsilieness if we had it down, permanently installed downtown on the square.
I don't want to bicker back and forth, but.
That's fine, you can.
Tables have been there for three years. It's the third summer, and now there are four tables, and there are a lot of people eating downtown. Even when the trash is full, they've stacked it neatly next to the trash can. I asked Pam Craft, who's our park superintendent, about this last week. There's no additional trash since the tables have been there. People have been using green tables and using concrete benches as tables for years, so we're not actually inviting more people to use, use the space for eating. We're giving them an actual place to sit that looks. We're giving them an actual place to sit that looks nice and fits in with the rest of the downtown theme, unlike the wooden tables.
Right, and I agree. I haven't seen an accumulation of trash down in Central Park either, so.
Well, I think it's sad, just because of losing the green space. I really do. Most areas, most cities are looking very much for parks and green space. And here we have it, and we're going to take it away? I mean, I think it's kind of redundant that we're going backwards instead of looking forwards, the things, as I say. And I just, I'm sorry, but I really don't think this is the answer for Fairfield at the present time. I think it's an expense that we don't really need, even if it's done by fundraising. I mean, I just think it's sort of like tearing up something that already is a feature of our community.
Well, just again, not to counter-argue every bit, but it's not lawn space we're losing. It's mulch and five bushes per spot. And I don't know if anyone's attached to those bushes, but we could potentially dig them up, you know, put them somewhere else if someone really had an attachment to them.
I think we've worked very hard to get people to accept the idea of the nodes and the bushes and things like that. And now for them to see that being changed, I'm just not sure that that's going to sell well either.
Do we have any other council members who have any comment, or?
I.
Yes? I drove by today at 12:30, and every table was being used. And if they're going to use the tables, I really don't see a problem with putting a nicer one or a better one out there for them to use. Parks are meant to be used, not looked at. So anything that makes it easier to use the park and more friendly to use the park, I don't think is a bad idea, so.
When this came before council before, I was a huge advocate of it because I was working out of town and personally was utilizing that community's Central Park, where they provided tables with my coworkers every day that we could possibly get out of the office. So in addition to the eateries that are down there that people can go into, buy food and eat down there, I mean, we were just looking for a space to get out of the office for our half-hour lunch. So I think it's a great opportunity, even for the businesses around the square, to have an extra cell for, somewhere for people to walk out and get a breather out of the office.
I do have a question for you, Michael. Design-wise and other, I would like to understand the aesthetic of putting these tables right along the main central thoroughfares. Because when other activities are happening, even at Christmas time and other things, these are major areas of traffic pattern where I, that didn't make sense to me. I would rather see it maybe out on those outer sidewalks as opposed to those central ones. So maybe you can explain to me why that was chosen?
Certainly. I didn't actually give the full history. Full history is, in 2015, the city signed on for the DOT-sponsored Iowa Living Roadway Visioning Program. And then during that process, we had a professional architect and students from Iowa State University looking at all these different areas of town for potential, say, improvements or changes that could be made. They had public meetings. They had designed it with seating all over different places. And the consensus was that using the spots that are right now, simply mulching bushes on either side of light posts, using that spot wasn't taking away lawn space. It was somewhat shaded. It was somewhat kind of not too close to the street, not too close to the gazebo. So it was a nice distance. It was symmetrical. And actually, the 2015 visioning had a much larger paved area and many more tables and chairs that is actually a little ridiculous. So this is actually, actually a pared-down version of that. But I invite everyone to walk Central Park. And if you tell me that those spaces are well-utilized now, I'll disagree. Because they're just, it's just a mulch and bush area that no one can stand on. Nothing can sit on. It's empty space.
And then the other thing was, do we have the shade patterns? Because when, when you look at the picture more from above, it looks like they're just sitting out in the sun. So that was my question, is what does that look like with shade patterns? Because the pictures aren't showing.
Yeah, this is just a mock-up that a friend of mine helped with. Yeah, certain times of day, some will be shaded. Certain times of day, some will be in sun. For just a few hundred dollars more per table, you can get a hole in the middle for an umbrella. That would probably be a whole other conversation, what color the umbrella is, who puts them up, who takes them down. So we'll cross that bridge if we get there. But just to open this up and say, yeah, well, let's let the, let's let the community, if they want to see this happen, pay for it. And I think that is letting the community choose. So if we say no and never let that happen, then we'll never know how many people out there are willing to put their money behind something like this. But certainly, we can order them with the holes for the umbrellas. So each one would have its own shade.
Can you speak to the cost, Mr. Haley, of the city? Suppose there were tables, what additional cost would the city have? Or would they incur any cost in maintaining these tables?
So I asked that question at the Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting last week. And the city has done no maintenance to any of the metal tables, no, sorry, metal benches that have been in our downtown since 2006. They were installed as part of our Great Places Downtown streetscape. There is no maintenance for metal tables. It's coated with a. Powder-coated, so it's weather-resistant. There's nothing to do to them. Brickwork, we probably should maintain. You're not supposed to just let it go for 14 years without ever coming back and redoing the grout between them. So yeah, there are certain places around town where there's little weeds growing between the bricks. That's expected when you leave it unsupervised, in a sense, for 14 years. So Pam Craft never claimed that there would be an additional cost to her crews to maintain these. But she said, her wish to the advisory board was, well, if this project happens, make sure it's, I'll just say, weed-neutral. You know, there are already weeds in those areas where this would go. So as long as I'm in town, I'll come pull them, just like I do my nodes downtown. Again, if we use the right product, we won't get, we won't have a weed problem. Use the right product between the pavers, weeds can't grow. It forms almost like a rubber cement.
Isn't there a beautification commission that would perhaps volunteer, if there were tables?
I think that this would be an area where you would want every few years to come and regrout it, just to make it, make sure it's looking as good as it can. Yeah, I mean, maintenance is important. But the tables themselves, there is no maintenance.
Just one quick, quick question when you're done. Art Walk uses the downtown a lot every month. Did they weigh in on this at all, or do you know what their view is?
And in 2017, Oliver Brader, as their director, was very much for this. Again, because we're utilizing, we'd be utilizing an area that currently is not usable. We're not taking anything away from Art Walk or any of the downtown events.
You're not going to be blocking a place where a tent could be set up or a craft show?
There's bushes there now.
I've organized two ragbys, 2013 and 2019. I was the president of the board. We never use the space that we're talking about for these because it's got bushes in it and mulch. It's just, it's literally unusable as it is. I like bushes as much as the next person, you know? I like mulch. But I won't miss them to have these. Because so many people have asked me in the 10 years, 10-plus years I've been a council member, can we please get some nice tables on the park? Because it's where people eat, because it's adjacent to the downtown restaurants. And because the downtown restaurants, even when they offer something, people would prefer to sit in our nice park than to sit on an empty sidewalk. It's not, it's not going to change the pattern of what people are already doing. It's just making the built environment match the use of our Central Park. Putting something that just looks much, much more beautiful and classy than those metal picnic tables, or sorry, the wooden picnic tables that are chained to trees. Just, those, to me, are offensive in a sense. This solves that problem.
I thought at one time, there was discussion about using, for instance, even the alley on the north side, some other options, rather than going into the park, that obviously, the park is more sought-after, understandably. Because as I say, I think the park is, is, you know, such a really strong feature of this community. And I think people are really not going to accept well, seeing these tables alive.
Mr. Haley, you've indicated, you've had people ask you for years, are there any indications that you're going to have donors?
Oh, certainly.
There are, there are indications that people are going to. So we have, we've been suggested, it's been suggested that there be a motion made? And there are two possible motions?
Well, is there a motion on the table at this point? Anybody willing to make a motion? Or, or the, I got a text message from the mayor suggesting possibly table this for this council meeting and wait till the next one? And see what the general public has for any suggestions?
Can you table this?
Yeah, you can table this, too, literally.
Can you picnic-table it?
I'd rather make the motion move forward and start fundraising personally.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I would like to accept this as a city project and that we will, the funds will come channeled through the Park and Rec Foundation. And the city will contribute the in-kind work as stated on the budget.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second, Mr. Haley has made a motion. And Ms. Anderson has seconded. Would you repeat your motion again to be clear?
Accept this project as a city project, utilizing the Park and Rec Foundation as the recipient of the grant funds. And the city will complete the in-kind work as listed on the budget.
Is there any discussion?
Should we put a time limit on that?
Yes. Three minutes.
A year?
We've had discussions.
I see.
You mean now?
No, he's talking about a time limit on the project.
I'll get the project completed, so does it linger for five years?
Are you suggesting an amendment to the motion, or?
I think so. So would you agree to an amendment of a year?
What is that?
Uh, no, no time limit. I'm not agreeing.
Actually, I can make a motion for an amendment and then see if it gets seconded.
Is that what you want to do?
Sure.
Okay, state your motion, please.
So I'll make the amendment, make the motion that we amended to a one-year time limit.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay. Motion fails. All right, so we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. And discussion is closed. Rebecca, would you call a roll?
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
No.
Ham?
No.
Rasmussen?
No.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy? She called me.
Did she? Oh, I missed it, sorry.
That's four to three.
Here's four to three, yeah.
Motion carries four to three? All right.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Katie.
That was the second one.
Next order of business, action item, consideration of authorization to proceed with extraterritorial zoning.
Did we, am I looking at the wrong one?
We got sent to a.
We need to authorize, oh yeah, never mind, sorry. This one's not on, I've got a different one.
I believe Mr. Morrissey, our city attorney's going to speak to this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Hopefully, all of you have in your tablets a copy of the ordinance that we previously adopted in 1998. And we never implemented, and we never did the map in final form or had the commissioners appointed. This was after we'd been through a year of dispute and, I'd call it, strong disagreement over a county zoning ordinance that resulted in the disbanding of a county zoning commission. And then two years later, after we waited to see if the county would adopt something just for the urbanized area around Fairfield, we took it up ourselves in '97. And this council room was filled with people, meeting after meeting. And essentially, it was almost as anti-zoning as the county experience. But nevertheless, our, this, this all happened at a time when this zoning ordinance, if you look back on it historically now, might have controlled things that happened in the next three or four years while it was being considered. For instance, there was no Vedic City then. And as things turned out after the charter hearings by 2001, when Vedic City was chartered, it allowed Vedic City to have half of our urbanized area to the north of town. And nobody saw that one coming, I guess, basically would be the way I would put it. But history sometimes surprises us as far as what we wished we would have known or could have known. So the ordinance, as you have in front of you right now, is basically, it's something I drafted, and it was about as simple an explanation as we could have for how the ordinance would work. Essentially, wants to consider an area surrounding our community as an area that is subject to our local zoning ordinance, subject to input from two people that are pointed to the zoning commission that live inside that urbanized area, outside our present city limits and inside the urbanized area limits that we would create on our map. The map that's up here now, let's see, is there a way to crank that around? Jason, is there any way to turn that so that we can talk about north? Or, north is up here. All right, okay. What we're looking at here, our Fairfield city limits are the darkest. There are some things that aren't on this map in spite of the key to the map showing a half a dozen different classifications. The urbanized area around Fairfield is actually all of this. If you can see that double line that's surrounding our town, and actually would be down here also, that is two miles outside of town all the way around the way the state code would want us to imagine our urbanized area. However, Vedic City, the southern part of Vedic City, is actually almost touching our urbanized area. And rather than there being a two-mile urbanized area for Vedic City, which would actually come down to our city limits, what happens instead is the city development board would look at this and say, well, you're just going to have to split the difference up there as far as that particular part of your unzoned area. Because Vedic City gets to have an urbanized area, too. And so what we did after the charter to Vedic City, we had a gentleman's agreement. Vedic City has basically agreed they will not interfere with our airport sphere of influence. They will not seek to expand their urbanized area anywhere east of that or southeast of it as far as things that would interfere with what our growth plans would be for the north of town. Similarly, we have agreed we're not going to do anything to the west of the airport or get into those things that would be within the sphere of influence of Vedic City. Generally, going with the idea that the urbanized area for both towns is split in the middle up there, and it's less than two miles wide. So their urbanized area would be less than a mile. Our urbanized area would be less than a mile. We just have to work that out on our map the way it. than a mile, and we just have to work that out on our map the way it looks now with our boundary. The boundaries are a little different than this map that was 20 years ago. This map was also used in the Vadic City hearings and in the Cypress Village hearings to explain to the city development board what really is going on, and our urbanized area for purposes of extraterritorial zoning, if you look at the ordinance, it is intended to take into account some other things that they aren't shown on this map, but before we would bring this to the council, we would have a map that shows some other things that affect us. For instance, around Vadic City, there is something that is a TIF district, and that was created to draw increment related to the roads that are paved around Vadic City pursuant to improvements that were authorized by the Board of Supervisors between 96 and 98, and the way I understand it, that was a 15-year TIF, and it's probably satisfied itself now. There was enough growth in the city, but that TIF district is still out there, and we have to recognize it until we're determined that, or our bonding attorneys are determined that it no longer has any applicability. Another area that we have to be aware of is something that I call baby ag zones, and what it amounts to is under 335.2 of the Iowa code, a wise old senator from Fairfield back in the 80s who felt that the farm community will never accept any form of county zoning, his name was Frosty Swengels, and Frosty felt that there should be a land use plan that makes it possible for farm families to protect their own livelihood at the same time that it does something sensible about it, understanding on how they're going to use their land and setting it off from land around it that might have different uses. This became a lot more important in the next 10 or 15 years with more rural subdivisions happening out in the area that these farm ag zones existed. And what you had to do to have an ag zone is you had to go to the Board of Supervisors, you had to have them accept your willingness to dedicate at least 300 acres of farm ground, and some of these are up to 500 acres, for strictly agricultural uses, and if you did that, you'd be assured that no one could come in and try to stop your agricultural uses. The farm smells, the farm activities that had to do with crop dusting, all of those kinds of things were supposed to be available within that zone and understood to be possible to be done within that zone, and a number of those were created. I think at the time, we were looking at our urbanized area in the late 90s, there were two or three dozen of those out in the countryside. We also had to take a look at things that are sensory farms, they get some special status classifications, so there's a number of things that go into what you have on your map before you ever start drawing any lines. And everything that you do with extraterritorial zoning in that urbanized area that we have remaining, when you're drawing your lines, you're doing it with the five people you have on your planning and zoning commission right now and two people that live in the urbanized area. The urbanized area can be any extent outside your current city limits, so it doesn't have to be two miles. Two miles is what the code says it can be if you choose to use your full urbanized expansion. If you choose to have a one-mile urbanized zone, and that's more palatable for everybody, both in-house here and people out in the area as far as logical growth control and the way you regulate what's going to be in the different parts of that zone, that's up to you. If you decide that you want to go for the full two miles to the extent you can, we're still going to have to have a part of it that's skinny down to the point where we don't have even a mile width, and our zoning commission will be telling us what the map's going to look like after we finish that appointment process if you decide on this ordinance. The last time we brought this up, we had packed house here for all three sessions on the readings, we had an awful lot of questions, but I think right now, probably some of the people that were againers back then probably see the value in having some definition for some of these areas, and I know that in the urbanized area between us and Vadic City, there are some businesses and some developments out there that had happened in the last 20 years that probably would just as soon see some zoning control their particular neighborhoods versus not having zoning and not having any regulation. So you're not going to know that for sure, though, until you've probably opened this up for committee review and for some public input. What we're hoping is that if you decide to go ahead with this, that this, this experience, this time, would get the commission appointed after your ordinance is passed. Last time, I know some of the people that spoke in opposition to this were people that I believe are our mayor at the time of the ordinance consideration, and our mayor after that time were kind of surprised they spoke in opposition of it. They lived in the two-mile area, and I was kind of surprised myself that they spoke in opposition to it. I honestly thought that probably the county board of supervisors might do something as far as extraterritorial around Fairfield, just because Fairfield was the one place in the county that favored continued zoning and planning. So at this point, what you have on this map, updated by a look at what's left of those zoned agricultural zones that existed under Frosty Swengels' idea, and what's left of the urbanized area to the north that's subject to a gentleman's agreement, and the rest of what I'll call the half-moon around the rest of our town, is what we have to decide, do we want to govern that with our zoning ordinance that governs what's inside the dark boundary there all around our town. I'm open to questions, and I, this is just a cursory explanation of what you would need to do, but the ordinance is pretty straightforward as far as how you do it, except the map's going to be just as much of a bear this time as it was last time. It's going to be a lot of work for Melanie, probably, as far as being sure of some of the things that we have to define in whatever we call our urbanized area in this ordinance. It was a hard thing to do the last time, it didn't go any easier this time, and we'll already probably be in the process of trying to come up with some good names of people that live out in that area to be commissioners. The other part of this, besides getting it in place, getting a map done, and implementing it for the purpose of starting to talk about different parts of it being used for different purposes, is that once you have zoning happening, you're going to have questions about zoning, so we also appoint two members to the Board of Adjustment from the urbanized area that live in the urbanized area, and that increases the size of both our planning and zoning board to seven members and our Board of Adjustment to seven members to meet the statute. And that sounds like it would be simple enough to do, but these are jobs that last for five years, these are jobs that there's a certain amount of controversy about sometimes, so we really do have to apply ourselves as far as how that would work also. So that's our challenge. The map doesn't have anything on it right now but one kind of classification of use. Everything comes in on the urbanized area as A1, it's agricultural use right now, and after the planning commission is expanded and they start talking about, maybe there's a couple of areas out there that would make sense, that they'd be something else than A1, you start talking about all of the other things in our municipal zoning ordinance right now that they could be classified as, and then it's a question about whether they deserve to be classified that way, whether it makes sense for land use management to have those kinds of zones, and again, you're the policymaking body, so the council can look at this as far as times when you might change the map somewhat, or you might make some amendments to your ordinance, but you're going to do that on the recommendations of the planning and zoning commission in its new form, and you're also going to be in a situation where you may get a little direction from your Board of Adjustment to if there are some things we didn't think of that get resolved with the Board of Adjustment making decisions. Yes, Mike?
Extraterritorial zoning isn't simply applying the same zoning as within the city to that area, where is it? My understanding was it's not...
No, it isn't stuck with all of the same zoning that are inside our zoning districts. We don't have a zoning map up here right now on the wall, but we've got
Yes.
...a lot of different districts. It's a checkerboard that everybody has to take a second look at. So this starts out, everything in that area that I described as the urbanized starts out A1.
Okay.
And with that, everything that's there currently doesn't get superseded by what that board would choose to zone it as? It gets to continue as is?
Gets to continue as is until the zoning commission says, we're proposing that this particular block of maybe 10 acres or something like that down next to, let's say, the southeast industrial park below the bypass ought to be treated as also industrial or something like that. At that point, you have all of the same things happen as far as safeguards to the neighbors and so forth, as far as notice of that being considered, the possible hearing on any objections to considering it being zoned that new way, and the whole idea is that there will be people on the commission, first of all, inputting about whether they think that's something that they want to see or not, but also, it then goes through the same due prospect procedures that we use every time we rezone a specific lot in a neighborhood anywhere here in town.
So, I have some friends in Glasgow Road, and they're in this area that's outside the city limits, they own homes down there. They're going to be zoned A1 when we...
Right, they're technically zoned A1 right now, anyway, yeah.
They have nothing to worry about, right? I can tell them with insurance that they'll be residential when it gets done.
Well...
No one's going to change their zoning, are they?
The questions will be, how do their neighbors feel about whether they are going to continue to be A1, or do they want to be R1? Or do they want to, I mean, if they start expanding a subdivision or something like that that's outside the city limits, and it turns into something where they think they'd be better served by having zoning rules, it may be neighbor versus neighbor agreeing or disagreeing about whether they want more city involvement and more city regulation or not, so, you know, that's, that's possible.
I had a proper...
How do you lay the fears of these individuals?
Exactly, people who have, say, rural residence, they also have a business on the property, and they also have ag. They don't want to change that, they're afraid this changes that.
Okay, well, the first thing is, those people should probably talk to their commissioners that live out where they do, and make sure those commissioners understand that they have that expectation, and more often than not, your commissioners that are the new part are probably going to be outspoken as far as watching to see if it really makes sense to make a change or not, and my expectation would be that the zoning commission is probably going to go slow on things that are added to the map as a different use, and unless you've got a cluster of concentrated use that's different than Ag 1, probably not going to be that kind of climate for that kind of a change, but you don't know. I mean, I've, I've watched a rural subdivision sell two-thirds of its lots in the period of a springtime because people liked what they saw. If that was happening in the urbanized area, that might turn into an R1 or R2 request. I don't know of something like that happening right now out in the parts of the urbanized area in recent years, but can't guarantee.
So could a group of citizens who live adjoining properties petition to be zoned R1 to the commission?
They could.
Is that what, is one of their routes?
They could come to the commission and make that presentation and say that everybody would rather be a residential than an agricultural, and will they consider making that change on the map? If they make that recommendation and the council sees the map and it makes sense, you amend the official zoning map, yeah.
They had that appeal process in front of them to
Right.
...to pursue if they wish.
Exactly.
Mr. Morrissey, what's being asked of us tonight is not to make a decision, it's just whether we're going to...
Just whether you want to bring this up for a discussion item with our committee process.
So which committee would this go to?
Property and environmental, I think.
Okay. I, the reason, the reason, this has been brought up for, ever since I've gotten here, so I wanted the council to say, yes, we want to move forward with beginning this process again, or no, we don't at this time, because it's, it's a lengthy process, it is somewhat controversial, so...
Michael, didn't we just go through this, like, four years ago?
A couple of years ago, when the Heartland was being built, out on the east edge of town, there was a swarm in here
That was different.
...wondering why we couldn't just do it right now.
Okay.
You can't just do this right now, it's going to be about a six-month process, even if everything goes smoothly and you do your notices and have your hearings.
So that's why we had John come and kind of give a little bit of an overview of what it does, and do we want to move forward with it, or do we not at this time?
So there would be committee meetings, there would be, if it moves from committee to council, there would be hearing, public hearings?
Yes.
All of that would still happen?
The next step would be what, John?
Committee.
Well, Melanie and I have talked, we'll probably go see the county engineer and figure out what's left of those dedicated ag zones of 300 to 500 acres, see if there are any problem for us any longer, and just look at our map as far as what else is out in the extraterritorial area, and then how much of it we want to recommend to be urbanized for us, and keeping in mind the existing understandings we have with our neighbor to the north, and the things that there really isn't anything we can do about. So that part, probably Melanie and myself, and some outside input, and when we have an area that we're very specific about, we bring it back to you and show it to you. At the same time, we probably, those questions about who we might appoint to this commission, the ordinance, frankly, the code provisions that this ordinance embodies, they haven't changed.
Mr. Morrissey...
The city development board hasn't changed.
Is there a motion you'd like, you might want to suggest to the council to consider, or we might want to phrase it?
Well, I think if you refer it to committee with a motion to have this reviewed by property and by environmental, I think that's probably an assignment that we can get started with.
A quick question, though, first.
Yeah.
So what role do the county supervisors play in this process? Are we, are we acting unilaterally, or do we work in conjunction with them?
County Board of Supervisors appoint the...
The two commissioners.
County Board of Supervisors appoint the urbanized area Planning and Zoning Members and Board of Adjustment Members. So, they do play a role.
That's limited there.
Right. And if the county decided, which I see no indication they would, but if they decided they're gonna pass a county zoning ordinance that deals with our two-mile urbanized area, it would preempt ours. And anything that we had in existence at the time, they would look at it and their new ordinance would supersede ours. And I don't, from what my research tells me, if we already had some places that were characterized as a particular type of zone other than A1, I think they'd have to live with that, because they've had the last 22 years to do something about getting an ordinance in place themselves. But nevertheless, we'd want to know what they thought. And we work on enough stuff together with the Board of Supervisors that we want to keep this as something that is a friendly effort as far as land use regulation if we do that. And essentially, we're not trying to do anything that we shove down people's throat. It's something that evolves.
We've also talked about trying to clean up what I'm gonna... City Limits, basically, and some of the islands and stuff that we have within, but this is completely different than that, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the areas within these islands that are zoned, that are county, are gonna fall under whatever this
It's true.
happens to be, right?
True, yeah.
Part of that two-mile limit is inside the city limits of Fairfield.
Yeah. There are little pockets inside our town that have been county pockets since
Good point.
I've lived here, so, 50 years ago.
Would this make situations like we've dealt with over the last couple of years with annexation, would it make it easier moving forward if this was in place? Does it play a role in annexation at all?
Well, annexation results in something different right away. The whole area that's annexed becomes R1. And maybe in an extraterritorial zoning discussion, it isn't all gonna be R1. Maybe some of it's gonna be residential, and some of it's gonna be other uses that are on the urbanized area map, rather than what would be always the understanding when you come inside the city limit. So, our city limit rule is still that new area inside the city comes in as R1. It just always does, and then we zone it.
So, just like this default is A1, where it gets annexed, and it's default is R1, and then it gets changed afterward?
Exactly.
Could a supervisor be one of the representatives on the boards on either the P and Z or the Board of Adjustment? I guess they're appointing their own representatives, so if they wanted to appoint one of them, I suppose...
I don't know if they could be...
They have to be resident of that area.
I can research that, but I don't know the answer for it.
If they were resident of the area, yeah. Okay.
I don't know. If they live in the area, I suppose it's possible, but I'm just not sure that somebody would advise them to do that.
Okay. I was asked that question.
Other questions?
Does a board want to move that to a committee?
I'd make the motion that we move this to a property committee.
There's a motion on the floor to move...
Who am I condemning to hell? Who's the...
Property is Martha. Judy and Michael.
Yeah, my condolences.
Sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Flonoy. Would you repeat your motion? Sorry.
You make the motion that we refer this to the property committee.
There's a motion on the floor? Is there a second? Is there a second? I second. Is there a second? Motion by Flonoy, second by Gandy. By our city clerk, please call... Any discussion?
And this is just exploratory, basically.
Can be, yeah, absolutely.
With a huge amount of time.
With a huge amount of time.
For the city attorney and the county, or the city engineer.
Maybe you could explain further your motion, Mr. Flonoy, what you had in mind, just to...
I can't.
Okay.
John can.
What are they gonna do exactly when we refer this to committee? They will first establish the agricultural?
Well, we'll first revisit the ordinance 20 years ago.
Okay.
And if they recommend it out to the council, then you'll be in a position where you're reading the map, so we've gotta add some information to talk about at that point, so that's gonna be...
Well, the first step is for them to bring that old ordinance back, and the council has to pass it in three readings, sorry.
You can't actually appoint a commission until you've got an ordinance authorizing that, and you can't adopt the map until you've got an ordinance authorizing that.
So, my motion is to refer this to the personnel, property committee, to look at that ordinance, and recommend whether they should bring it back to full council or not.
That would be up to the property committee to move it forward if we did.
You have to bring that ordinance back to us. Just do one step at a time.
I understand it'd be the gist of your motion initially made, so I second this motion. I second it.
Okay.
I second it.
Sorry.
No. Let me be sorry about that. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rebecca, let's call the roll.
Flonoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business, consideration of resolution, consideration of contract for solid waste slash recycling services.
This is the written contract with Waste Management that we'd agreed upon verbally over the last, I don't know, couple...
Two meetings.
Couple meetings, as written, in this... It's written form now, so...
And Mr. Flonoy and Mr. Coker, our city minister, worked very hard on it, as well as the Environment and Franchise Committee, so...
Right. The contract is identical to the former contract we had that expired on June 31st. The only difference is that the garbage and recycling rate per account is $13 per pickup, and the escalation clause is...
Three percent. Two years.
Two point... Well, 2.3% this first year, then it'd be 3.25%, and then two, 3.5%.
It says three, 3.25, 3.25, 3.25.
Thank you. It's 2.3% the first year, then three, then 3.25, and 3.5, and 3.5, like we agreed before.
Any questions or comments?
I'd make the motion to adopt, to accept the contract.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to adopt the contract by Mr. Flonoy, second by Mr. Toohill. Any discussion? Rebecca, call the roll, please. Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flonoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business, resolution, consideration of support of TSIP application draft for Highway One project. Please, Ms. Carlson.
T-SIP.
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 Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, city administrator. Ms. Carlson, please.
The T-SIP stands for Transportation Safety Improvement Program, and this grant program through the DOT is the same fund that the city received money for the Ninth and Burlington pedestrian improvements. What we would like is authorization from the council to apply for these funds for Highway One. We're applying for the whole project, including both Libertyville Road and Fillmore intersections. During my last project update, the council, I had brought up that we were looking at closing South Junction Road at the intersection of Libertyville Road. This application leaves it in because the safety factor will only go up if that is removed. So, we're kind of, we're playing it safe in our application. By approving this application, you're not approving either concept. You're approving the increased safety factor at those intersections. The actual, whether South Junction Road gets closed or not is not part or tied into this motion, so I wanted to make that very clear. And so, what you would be doing is authorizing the mayor and Aaron to sign this application once Chev Hattery has finished the document. What you have attached to the council is... Attached to the council packet is very close. They were going to add some statistics that came from our local road safety plan, and then submit that application.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Submitting.
Motion to approve by Anderson, seconded by Flonoy. Ms. Loper, would you call the roll, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Flonoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business, resolution, consideration of fixed base operator lease extension. Mr. Lyons, Fairfield Airport, Fairfield Airport, please.
Thank you very much. Airport Board approved the fixed base operating lease and also the next item last month, and I'm here just to ask that the city also approves my extension on the fixed base operating lease first, and then the airport management contract second. I can ask it, or if you have any questions, please ask.
Just a note, the fixed base operator's lease cost is increased from the former contract, but it's increased by the cost of living that we increased over the last four or five years. We gave Bob an increase of cost of living over the last four or five years, so it's actually reflecting pretty close to what the budgeted amount is this year. Also, making contact with a couple other cities that have FBOs, this cost is pretty reasonable for what we're asking the FBO to do as an operator of our airport.
Any further questions?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Ms. Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Flonoy. Any discussion? Ms. Loper, please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flonoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business, resolution, consideration of airport management contract extension. I know, Mr. Lyons, you had spoken about it just a moment ago, but if you would?
Yes. This is just the management part of the contract that I've had for 25 years now. It's just an extension into 2030.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Flonoy. Any discussion?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Loper, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flonoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business, ordinance amendment to city code, Chapter 20, accessory structures. We're asking, this is a motion where we're seeking to move... This is the first reading, I should say. This is the first reading, I'm sorry. Ms. Carlson?
So, this ordinance is coming to recommended from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The council actually sent this topic to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our code defines ground-mounted solar energy systems as accessory structures, and currently they are not allowed on a building that doesn't have... Or on a lot that doesn't have a primary structure. What we're proposing is to allow the ground-mounted solar on lots that do not have a primary structure. Section 3 of the ordinance that's in front of you lists the restrictions related to placing the solar on a vacant lot. They are more... It is more restrictive than a regular accessory building, or I should say, an accessory building that's on a lot with a primary structure. The reason being is we want to maximize the buildable area on a vacant lot. We don't want to see a solar panel get put in a place that would prohibit that lot from being built on in the future. Again, these more restrictive elements only apply when it's a vacant lot. When it's an occupied lot, then the regular accessory code applies. Also, part of this ordinance, in Section 4, we are requesting to add a definition to our unsafe building code. This applies to the ground-mounted solar. It allows us a definition for when the solar panels become obsolete, and allows us a section in our code to have those removed if needed. I mean, obviously, we don't want to have to use this section, but this defines when they would be considered a nuisance. We did have one public comment sent to Aaron and I. I left this email on your desks. And this request comes from Ideal Energy, and the request would be to, instead of saying that the system needs to be in the rear half of the lot, they're suggesting that it's in the rear two-thirds of the lot. Again, the purpose of the restrictions is just to make sure that we leave buildable space, and I feel comfortable with the two-thirds rather than the half. In a standard 132-foot lot, that still makes the setbacks 44 feet, or 14 feet greater than what we generally require. So, I would be in favor if anyone would want to make that friendly amendment. Other than that, I think that covers all of the parts of this ordinance.
Any questions? Comments?
Motion to approve with the addition
With the amendment.
of the friendly amendment.
Motion on the floor?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to approve the ordinance as read with the friendly amendment by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Toohill. Are there any further discussion? Ms. Loper, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flonoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Abstain. I work for Ideal Energy.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. One extension, one extension, abstention. Next order of business, ordinance amendment to city code 19.08 subdivision requirements application, first reading.
This is also coming to you from Planning and Zoning Commission, but this was brought to the commission by the Planning and Zoning Department. Currently, when a land division occurs, we have three categories: simple subdivision, minor subdivision, and major subdivision. Major and minor subdivisions go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the simple subdivisions are approved by staff. The term subdivision and simple subdivision has caused some confusion in our office and the reporter's office, because the term subdivision indicates that it needs a name. So, we are recommending changing from simple subdivision to simple division. The ordinance also adds a terminology for land conveyance. This is when someone wants to divide off five feet of their property and sell it to their neighbor. Because we require all lots to have a 40-foot affrontage, typically when we approve a split like that, we require them, or we say as a condition of approving this, you have to combine that five feet with your lot. This proposed ordinance just formalizes what we're already telling the property owners to do. And then, the rest of the ordinance updates the subdivision code to reflect the current state code. And then, on page 3, we do list the fees. We are not proposing to change any of the fees for review of the subdivisions. The only one that we're adding is for when we review a replat of a subdivision or of a split. Oftentimes, those are very minor. We're moving a line just a few feet, and our staff has already spent plenty of time looking at it. There's not a lot of work to look at a replat. So, we're not changing any of the fees, but only adding the replat cost. And then, the rest is language that has already... That was already in the code, again, just updating it to reference the correct state code.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Ms. Rasmussen. Rebecca, if you call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Flornoy? Oh, Toohill, I'm sorry. Toohill?
Yes.
Let me reach that out, okay. Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business. Ordinance 1187. Amending City Code 20.12 and 20.14 concerning enforcement and penalties related to animal control. Third and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This motion on the floor approved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Flornoy. Any discussion? Perhaps, Katie, could you review briefly what the outline of this motion, what the outline of this ordinance is? I know you discussed it before, but since this is the final reading.
No, it's, this came before Public Safety, and we attempted to amend the ordinance to make it more enforceable. We were having an animal at large issue, and we had representation from the police department here talking about how difficult it was to enforce. And then we also wanted to put ownership back on the animal, the person owning the animal, so that if we continue to have problems, it's, it's intended to be easy to enforce and make a statement. So both financially and then responsibility-wise, too, making sure the animals are up to date on shots, you pay your fee at the vet, you pay your ticket for your animal at large. So it was our attempt to make the code more user-friendly and hopefully give a little bite to it. No pun intended.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
No.
Pun was not intended on that one.
I don't know. Ms. Loper, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business. Ordinance 1188. Amending City Code 20.78 concerning airport height regulations. Third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve by Rasmussen, seconded by Mr. Flornoy. Any further, or any discussion? Not all? Nope. Ms. Loper, please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business. Ordinance 1189. Amending Code 11.08 concerning list of trees permitted. Third and final reading.
It's our third reading, our fourth time doing this. I'll make a motion to get it done, make it official.
Second.
Motion by Haley, seconded by Anderson. Any, any discussion? Ms. Loper, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. We have our mayor's report. Our mayor isn't here. We wish her well. She, she's being, she's being safe. Everything is fine, everything is well, but she's being safe, and for the benefit of the council, we appreciate that certainly, and for the city. But she's doing well. There are committee board report, or board appointments that have been suggested, I believe, by the CVB Board to, as members of the board, Celesta, Shell, Napaleo, I don't know if I'm saying that name anywhere close, and Dan Johnson. I would ask Mr. Haley to speak to these, these appointments, as I believe you're quite, you work quite closely with the CVB.
I used to. Before I was on the council, I was their board president for three years, but I will just say that the agreement with the city is that we appoint about half of their board. I can't remember if it's four or five of their board members. I think it's four of their nine board members are appointed by the city. If you read the background of both these individuals, one is new to town, Mr. Johnson is new to town. Celesta grew up here, moved away and came back, and now is raising a family and, and working at a local business with her husband. So I'd say they're both excellent additions to the Visitors Bureau Board. I'll make the motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Haley, seconded by Mr. Flornoy. Any discussion? I will say that I always, we always appreciate when citizens step up to serve the city in any capacity, and this is certainly welcome. Any further discussion? Ms. Loper, please, call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order, the next item in the mayor's report is the Public Police Policy Review. I believe at the last meeting, we had a significant discussion, and that was going to be continued. I think we probably want the mayor's input on this area. We don't, and discussing it with the mayor this afternoon, or yesterday, rather, there's, we, the sense of the mayor that we, the city council should have a discussion in this area, further discussion, direction we take. It's, it's something that we haven't, it's up to the council. So I'd like to open it up to discussion, understanding that we may be something we'll continue on to another meeting, but if there's anyone who'd like to comment or bring up something about this particular area, given that we spoke about it at some length last meeting, and we may speak about it again, I'd certainly welcome that.
I spoke with the mayor today a little bit, and one of the, I think this might be a good suggestion is to have our Personnel Committee review the arrest and use of force policies that the police department has. I mean, I don't think we need to go through the entire policy manual, but I think the topics of discussion are the arrest and use of force policies that the city, or that the police department uses. And I think maybe that, that our Personnel Committee usually handles any policy, Personnel Policy things that we may have. So I think that would be a good place to start with those, with that committee, as they're all elected officials that represent our citizens.
I wonder if I could, thank you, thank you, Mr. Corvus. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Flornoy to speak to this. I know that you've made some points that are similar, along the lines of, as I understand, Mr. Corvus said.
I guess my feeling was, if the police department has a policy manual, then the council should adopt it formally and have a review process for amending it as needed. So my recommendation would be to, like Aaron was saying, Personnel Committee would take a look at this document, and we would adopt it formally as a council. As I, we've never done that before. So we have a document out there that, that city employees are following that has not been approved by city council. I think that's inappropriate. So I think we need to take responsibility for adopting it.
It is, it is appropriate. The way our government's set up is that each department head and departments can have their own policies internally. And remember, we did the Personnel Policy, and it kind of addressed that to an extent. My concern with the city council reviewing it and calling that a public review is it's not truly a public review. So the process that Chief Thomas had emailed some people about, I don't know if everyone saw it, it's more of a public dialogue. It's not so much geared towards policy. Policy is part of it, but most of it's prioritization. What are the priorities in our community that, that our citizens want our police force to focus on? And there's a benefit to the police to hear from the public of what they want more and less of. And as I said to Chief Thomas, even if the end result is nothing changes, to have the dialogue is important. So this body looking at the policy, it opens up a little bit of a dangerous precedent. Are we going to start looking at the library policy, the waterworks part of the policy? I'd rather not get involved, and I've seen the binder. Mr. Morrissey has it over here, if anyone would like to review it. It's a, I, 350-page policy. I don't know if that's as needed right now, as just letting the public have some input. Not so much policy, somewhat policy, but a lot of priority. And that's something that other communities are already doing. That would be my preference, public dialogue.
But didn't Chief Thomas tell us that he had trouble getting citizens to participate in the review process?
Coffee with the cop, yeah.
So how do we, how do we move this forward so that we do get participation by interested parties?
So most likely, you would have to bring in an outside facilitator. So similar to how we did the comp plan, where we had public meetings, surveys, more than one public meeting in case someone can't make it to one. You got to give everyone ample opportunity to have their voice heard, and, you know, a lot of times, you don't want to just leave it open-ended, right? So you got to kind of channelize the questions you're asking. Make it multiple choice, not essay answer, right? So you can kind of aggregate that data more efficiently. Yeah, we're looking at hiring somebody would be the way to do it. Try to do it internally, I think we'd trip over ourselves, but getting some impartial person, and there are, I'm sure there's every range of cost out there, from, you know, premium package to, to somebody from one of the universities nearby who does this kind of thing. But we've been through this before. We've been through all sorts of this kind of process for all sorts of projects and all sorts of priorities. You just do it for prioritizing police policy.
Are you talking about a public forum of some type?
I was thinking with a town hall forum, format be, well, we'd need a professional to tell us how to organize.
Exactly. I think that a professional helps.
I think whether, whether we would need a, just my comment, I don't know, whether we need a professional to organize it and pay them is a question to be decided, but I don't know if that's necessary. Maybe it is, but I don't know that it's necessary. But we did, we had had, we have had forums. I know we had a forum recently, or last year, I guess it was now, in the exhibition hall, having to do, I think it was 5G. And it was on a weekend, and it had a pretty good attendance. And I think there's another forum, too. So are you talking about something like that? We had, you may have an expert or two, and maybe the mayor, and perhaps, say, the chief of police, or something different than that?
No, I, those were nice, but if you notice, there were no deliverables afterwards, right? It was two people on either side of an issue talking, and then answering questions from the audience, and then thank you for coming. This has to have a deliverable. It has to have something that comes out of it, or else it's just talk. So that's where you get the professional who guides you through the process. Like I said, we've been through this before for all sorts of community planning. It's, you know, there are people out there who, this is their expertise. I don't know, I don't think it's, it would be, I think it could justify the spending of the funds and say that is for the public good, pretty easily.
Have you, have you got any idea what the range?
I have no idea. Chief Thomas was going to look into it, but I don't know if he did.
I'd talked to one firm that, well, they do more advisory stuff for police organization, but I would venture, I guess he could do something similar to that, and I would say anywhere between five and 10 grand would be the, would be the price range.
That's probably about right.
Don't quote me on it.
When you say deliverable, I just have the question of what was said about when they actually are reviewing policy, you know, that still has to come in line with state law and even federal law to an extent. So because people feel strongly about something, that doesn't mean it necessarily fits into those boundaries already in place. So how can we, as a city council, promise a deliverable if it's something that actually goes against already precedent?
Well, we wouldn't.
And written law?
We wouldn't. We wouldn't, we wouldn't tell people that we can change something we can't by law. The only things on the table are those things we can control. And again, that's why you use an expert, right? They separate the mandates from the variables. And I've seen this with other cities here in the state, Iowa City, Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, they're already going through this process. Cities do have a good amount of leeway. I don't know if you saw the interesting information that Mr. Morrissey provided? He was kind of answering a question that someone asked, do we have a contract? Their police force? Well, there's no formal contract, but the state law does call for maintaining order.
Mr. Morrissey?
He's already ready.
He is. Mr. Morrissey, if you don't mind taking a
I want to talk about deliverables as a concept, too, because deliverables, as far as what the community might be looking for, and what we have to be aware of as far as being their government, is both the U.S. Constitution as far as domestic tranquility, that means law and order, and the state constitution, which talks about protection of property and protection of persons, beginning of the Constitution. It makes it an essential service that we provide public safety. And so this manual, with all its policies and procedures, is just part of what the contract with the public is, that we deliver every day. And we can't have an agreement not to deliver that unless we have a different constitution that we operate under. But we can listen to what people are concerned about as far as the way we're administering our essential services responsibility. And that manual is a living document as far as the national law enforcement associations that contribute to the policies. They're not necessarily magic, correct answers. There are some policies in there if you choose to use certain kinds of combative techniques in arrest, and there are other policies in there that take you a different direction, and you still have to make decisions about what your practice is. And this, it actually offers us an excellent opportunity to study ourselves and where we've been maybe in the last 50 years. I can remember when our police cars, when I came to town, had a telephone receiver that was their mobile unit in the car, and that was how they communicated. It was pretty prehistoric as far as radio communications, but it grew on us, and now we've got the most state-of-the-art stuff you can have. Our manual offers alternatives, and our history of what we've been through in the last, I'm going to say, last 45 years I've been around, is that we've had a pretty successful law enforcement experience as far as not getting our behind sued off. We're pretty lucky as far as very few experiences with the ombudsman, very few experiences with Civil Rights Commission complaints, and the things that we have had, we can learn from. So every year, I have to write for the state auditor a report on what we are looking at as far as our city's exposure on different areas of performance of our services to the public. And some years, we have one or two cases that involve something that law enforcement did or didn't do. That's okay. We come out pretty well on those situations as far as defending and explaining. But there's still areas that we can learn from, and there are areas that, when you look at them, maybe we could have done that differently, and we would have avoided getting sued and so forth. So one of my suggestions would be, if you do have a facilitator, that we pull out our history in that area, just look at the things that actually made it into something that was a formal dispute, or something that we had to go farther than the norm as far as resolving it in-house or out at the law center with our supervisory officers. And take those things and decide if there aren't some policy changes that might arise from what we learned in that case or this case and so forth. Similarly, as far as a facilitator, I think we put it on the facilitator to say, if you're going to have meaningful discussion, we want people to actually buy into this. If they're going to have comments, we don't want them coming in saying, what do we do to get a referendum to just defund the police? I've had that question in the last month. That's silliness. First of all, we don't have referendums. Just some states do and some don't, but that's not on our agenda. And secondly, as far as defunding, we're not going to defund an essential service. That would be a violation or a breach of what we do for government service. But what we can learn from people inputting is going to be enhanced by them having an exposure to the things that we've been out there, had our necks on the block as far as litigation and things like that. Also, the things that we were prompted to maybe make some changes in our manual ourself because of the way this case worked out or that case worked out. What have we learned about ourselves in the last 30 or 40 years? I think we've learned a bunch.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah.
So what would you suggest in terms of the structure and going forward? How do we do this police policy review?
Well, if, if you alert people to the fact that there is a policy manual, and as was suggested, maybe we want to focus it on the areas that have to do with restraint, was suggested, maybe we want to focus it on the areas that have to do with restraint, use of force, and things like that, if that's what people are most unhappy about, I, depending on who I see, when I see them, and Tuesday and Thursday mornings, sometimes if court ever reopens again, I'll be seeing them again, but sometimes people just don't like an attitude.
Right.
Or they don't like the way someone spoke to them disrespectful, or bossed them around. That comes with being an authority figure that's probably young, more ambitious, and not as prone, from their experience, to be a little more reserved and so forth.
Is there any other council comment or suggestion?
Well, I was just gonna ask if that document's available on the website so people can look at it.
Good question.
Could make it available to people, right?
I think it could be made that way.
It's not a secret document, it's a public document.
No, it's not. It's just, yeah, we can.
I know it's a large document, but I say so what to that.
Pretty extensive size. It's a pretty extensive size.
I know, but I say so what to that.
What's that?
So what?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just, yeah.
I don't care that it's 250 pages or 300 pages.
No, I'm just.
The idea is we make it available to people to read, so it's not secretive, they can access the information, they can ask questions, they can become informed about it. Doesn't hurt.
If the website would allow us to do it, that's where I was going. If, if we are allowed to put something that size on there.
Well, you can put it in the library, I mean, you know.
Yeah, we could do that too.
We could arrange a few copies of this with people that are interested enough to want to check it out, rather than take up our website space completely with one book, because it's pretty complete. But, as far as what you'll have in there, I think the suggestion that there'll be certain areas that are mostly the areas the public are interested in, may narrow that down to maybe 30 pages instead of 300.
Are there any other comments or suggestions by council? Is there a suggestion, or is there an idea of how we might want to move forward here?
I guess my thing.
I think we should explore the idea of bringing, bringing in a consultant, maybe, or at least talk to somebody and find out what kind of service they have to provide, if we want it or not.
Or is it something worth, is it something that, yes, that's possible, but the idea is also to refer to the personnel committee for further review, and to report back to the council, and to, for suggested action steps, if there are any?
I'd make that motion.
That's a suggestion, I just.
Start with committee, so I second that motion.
Is it personnel or public safety? Personnel.
That's a good question, yeah. What committee would it be? Personnel or public safety? I think it's personnel.
I think personnel committee would be appropriate. We could do, but they're not doing anything else.
Oh, yeah, they are. And you know that. There's a motion on the floor to refer further discussion of the public policy, police, public police policy review to the personnel committee by Mr. Florinoy, a second by Mr. Halli. Any further discussion? Mr. Morrissey, you had additional points?
A thought back here was, we've had a facilitator in the past, not on a law enforcement discussion, but with Pat Callahan, who's come down from northeast Iowa a couple times, and talked the council through something. I don't know if his company has somebody in their employ that would work in this area or not, but he's one of the examples of somebody that I regarded as a good facilitator. I'm sure you have some other ideas, who are good facilitators.
I think we can call League of Citizens and see if they have a recommendation.
That'd be, yeah, certainly something the personnel committee, I believe Ms. Hamm is the chair of that committee?
I'm making a note.
And this, you know, this is an ongoing process. I don't think it should be considered done in two months, or even six months. It might be a regular thing that we keep in front of us.
It may be, yeah. We're referring it to personnel now, I mean, that's the motion on the floor.
Right.
And with the idea they're going to review and discuss, and report back to council, full council, and we'll just go from there. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Lopel, we've called a roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Was that Hamm, Halli, did you second her?
Yes.
Halli?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. City attorney report, a next order of business, I think we've had our report.
You've heard enough.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Committee and next, committee and board reports, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission/ Economic Development Report dated July 6, 2020. Mr. Halli?
Sure, I'll hit it real quick. So that was a work session between the Economic Development Committee, which is myself, Katie, and Tom, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a very good meeting. We hashed out some more of the details of this mixed-use zone that we're talking about for the new Chicago area, Fourth Street, Grimes Depot, that area. And the next step will be an informal public meeting, where we want to invite property owners in the, in and around the area to get their input. Probably meet again to take that input and formulate a formal proposal, or formal ordinance proposal. And then we'll have a formal public meeting, to make sure everybody gets the mailings, that they're invited to come and speak their mind. And then if everything goes well, maybe sometime in the fall, we'll be ready to actually do the three readings to change the zoning ordinance. Anybody have any questions about the mixed-use zone? Did we talk about that? I can't remember how much we talked about this, but basically, it's our three, so mixed residential business and very light manufacturing, so very light industrial. Nothing noisy or smelly allowed, some just simple, kind of home cottage industry type stuff.
It's already living that way a little bit.
Exactly. Again, it's a, it's a mixed-use area that could benefit, hopefully benefit, from the zoning being a little bit more flexible. Perhaps we'll see some development in that area, because the next step is bulldozing. Okay, that's unofficial, but could go there. So no action on that, Mr. Protem.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Halli. Personnel committee had a meeting on July 8, 2020. Ms. Hamm is our chair.
Yeah. So today, hopefully you all found it in your fun email box, that there is a evaluation form for our city administrator, and we would really appreciate it if you'd have that in by 5:00 o'clock on Friday. You can either email it back to me once you've filled out the form, or you can print it off to fill it out, and leave it in a sealed envelope at the front desk by 5:00 o'clock, and I'll come and get it, make sure it's there. Next week then, Personnel Committee will regather and go through that evaluation together, and then arrange a time and place to sit down with Aaron and go through it. And then we will report back to you at the next council meeting of that discussion. Summing it all up?
Yeah, I want to applaud Ms. Hamm. We, that entire meeting, on the Personnel Committee, we met, started at 7:00 and we ended at 9:45 PM. And all of it was about making sure we had the very best city administrative evaluation protocol form in place. So this is a lot of work, led by Judy.
She did a really good job.
Really good job, so.
My, my point is to tailor make now a form that can be used, and, and that it's a living document. And I'm hoping that you will all see as you fill it out. Media is taking a huge transition, which you guys all know. And so, some of the questions, I think, could be expanded there, so that we better understand how we're really communicating, in two regards. Because we communicate person to person, so, you know, there's questions about the interpersonal, just, you know, interactions with individuals or small groups of people, right? But then there's the media-type communication to the public in general, however that needs to happen. And so I would like you to consider that some more. Also, we noticed that there's very few questions out there really about economic development. And so when you were mentioning how that committee is working right now, I would just appreciate if you would be considering some of those questions that might help that expand, so that we have a better feel. Again, anything that, you know, kind of looks at the length of, of his expertise, but then also that full circumference of, of some of these skills and services that he's bringing in, and how we can improve then, as a council, our conversations with him through a given year, and looking at some of the services that are provided and that he's overseeing in the city. So that way he gets a better feel for how he's growing in his position and, and other things. So thank you for filling those out, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, please do, we did, we worked very hard on it.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I do, I want to say this, I really should have brought some supper or something for these guys, because we were here longer than I anticipated. But, they really dug in and, and really made sure that each of the questions really has a purpose and function, so. I was, I was very glad with how well it flowed. It wasn't like it was tedious, it was just a process.
Just a process, but I tell you, Aaron, if you're not a better city administrator after all this, I don't, I don't, I don't know how you cannot be.
You know, I was gonna refrain from making a smart comment, but.
You didn't measure it every, every which way.
I was gonna say, okay, now that you did that.
Yes.
Don't you think a 10-page evaluation form is long enough to add more questions, really?
No, I didn't say that, I didn't say all of them have to stay either, so.
I dreaded mine, and it just kept reading. I'm like, good gracious.
Yes, yeah.
We have the administrator and department reports, we have the fiscal year review, Mr. Coker.
I'm gonna leave, because of the meeting, do you have any questions on my letter that I sent to you?
I have one question, actually. And, the last line of it was that the revenues of the loss were down, was down 10% of them.
Yes.
Do we need to adjust that this year? Because chances are we're gonna be down again.
Well, the budget's already set, but we are already looking at, we're probably gonna have to have a, a, a ways and means meeting to talk about where we can make some cuts to the grants that we've given.
Okay.
And to, we, 50% of loss goes to street projects, so we've already talked about some of that internally, but we also have to look at the grant money that we've given out, or we've.
One option might be to delay the grant, keep it funded, but pay it out next year.
So we're gonna have to have that conversation.
Okay.
To look at that here this next year at some point.
All right.
Is it fair to say, just looking at that letter, that the city is in a good position financially?
I would say we are in a good position. The city has, they, they didn't necessarily plan for something like this, but we're in a good position to absorb and move forward in where we're at.
That's good. Good to know. Good to know. Well, we miss our mayor, we hope she'll be back next time. Is there a motion to adjourn, or any further business?
I had one question.
Yes.
I don't want to drag this out all night, but did anybody else get any official phone calls, emails following the 4th?
Following what?
The 4th of July, regarding fireworks.
Yes.
No.
I got a call.
I got a call.
Yeah.
I got a couple calls.
Yeah, I got two calls. Well, I got the same call twice.
Are you at large?
Uh, no.
Okay, because I figured I got them, because I'm at large.
Yeah.
People setting them off, or what?
Complaining.
Yeah.
Well, I thought the fireworks noises were rather diminished compared to prior years.
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, I got a complaint, pretty vociferous bother, somebody's quite bothered by the fireworks in their area where they lived.
To the point that they were gonna move out of town if we didn't do something about it?
Yes.
Okay, same call.
Yes, yes, so.
I had someone approach me too, and I just said, come to council and share with us your experience, we.
Yeah.
Personalize it. They were concerned with the very loud noise makers that were not pretty to look at, but just made a lot of noise.
Yeah. I mean, it's unfortunate, I, I don't know, I think the council looked at it pretty carefully when we put a, I think, a very limiting restrictive ordinance in there.
We've approved, what, type D ordinance? Is that what we're, is allowed to be?
I don't remember what it is now, there's a.
I guess, what I was gonna ask is if we can edit that list with the, when we adopt an ordinance like that, do you have to adopt the entire list of fireworks, or can you edit out some of those?
I can't remember if it's A, B, and C type, and I don't remember if C or A, do you remember, John, on the types of fireworks?
I don't know. I don't think they have.
I say the state, I thought we had determined at the committee meeting that we had to, we were just restricting the timeframe, the state restricts what can and can't be set off and sold.
Right.
So we get no say in it.
We can't be more restrictive than the state?
Short of not allowing them, at all.
Not really, you can't.
Yeah.
You have to adopt the whole class of ordinances or not?
You say we don't want any.
Right. So you can't edit a particular class of ordinance.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So, Mr.
Sir.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Toohill to adjourn, second by Mr. Florinoy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, they carry. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Paul?